Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the planning board. The 17th, I'd like to start with a roll call for the planning board members. Alvin Park.
Here.
Long How.
Here.
Jamie Pennington.
Here.
Heather Rogers.
Yes.
Victor Tater here and absent are Delphie Wild, Bonnie Sontedek, John Walters, and Richard Hill. Let's just go quickly through the agenda for tonight. The first items may be joint public hearing, planning and development committee and committee of the whole. I think we have an overhearing on market landing park expansion and restaurant. Restaurant, restroom, visitor facility. Going for site manager review and for the downtown overlay district special permit. Then we have a request for minor modification, thirteen year old line, approval minutes, and any other notice. So we're going to the joint public hearing and ask the council camera to follow along.
Yeah, hi, I'm Congressman Cameron and I'm the chair of the planning and development committee and I'd like to. Do the roll call. It will count in also, a good roll call, so Councilor Wallace.
Here.
Councilor Wallace is here, Councilor Preston.
Here.
So we do have a four by committee, but like the formal label, but not our quick public hearing. We are also joined by our complement of colleagues, joined by the. The guys. Presses.
I'll get back to you. Just have to move twice.
I was.
It's not better than.
We have, unfortunately, we had the vice minister very close your way. Okay. Did you hear any? All right. Good point taken, thank you.
So who made the presentation?
So I'll be doing that with Sasaki. So for the record, my name is eighty-four, I'm in planning and development. I'm the city assistant planning board of the project, the project processes. Here I'm actually willing to do that because I'm running around different cities, but I'm part of the project. Sorry, particularly, sorry, oh, I'm sorry, sorry, my apologies. Don't make it happen fast. Sorry, on the zoning amendment, sorry, that is. Oh, there's. For the council, the, there is a zoning amendment. Here I'm just gonna switch to make sure that everybody will get the room here and see this. There's a relatively small and limited proposal at this time. Councilor Collins agrees to respond to this. I've been very intimately involved with the West End or Western Fire Station private. The design, covering the outskirts of the butter, so obviously important to discuss what would be appropriate. Focus on that particular product and also focus on your budget for eventual matters. In essence, we'll be defined here as we were moving at the western fire station private. We have a relatively small monitor. It wasn't, it was apparent to us that it was necessary to acquire a certain variance project. And so we thought it wouldn't get the plans to be developed under architect or intentional requirements. It might be usable in the case of current relatively few fire stations in the cab. To consider a modification of the venture in finance here. The plan is still going to become a bit of a blind word, a second that are cool. But the suggestion here is if we reduce the setbacks, eventual apartments later. I think there are definitely still on here. In order to make sure that. That the project itself does not require areas, it isn't apparent necessarily that the prior dimensional permits, significant benefit of the city. As soon as we have, and it is, as will be, we'll play very, very simple interview. It'll be extensive, thanks, and Lance, to say what for buyers. So I know you're frightened with this, but the screen. But the, the dimensional table is the only piece that's being touched here. As you can see, the mark up showing edits to the table in dark outline or underline. I don't really try to do the hard, the strikeouts, the forty thousand square foot lot area, we have fifty thousand scripty. The street budget in height, let's say the same, lot coverage and change slightly. Open space events, same, five, four, or a part of that. And then the front side appears some back, so it's going to be forty.
Sorry to slow down.
My apologies. It's not large.
It's not large.
Yeah, my apologies. We are fully able to change the dimensional factors for fire stations in the city. We have relatively few of those, obviously, so there's been the fact very much, but these setbacks will be adjusted for everything. In this case, a project that's completely just setback from document various, whereas current zoning might necessitate a various. And it is necessarily obvious and that would benefit from that, but well, if you have an active issue, it's like that would be. Very hard fight.
Thank you. Any questions? I guess I will open it up to the public hearing, anybody that's from public use to speak to this. Please go ahead and.
Okay, I think so.
If you want to speak very publicly on it, are you welcome to come to the podium and we'll also check and see if anybody will all these. If you want to remote, you can just use the, 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 your hand. Seeing any of this time. Where in the chair?
Well, if there's a, no one is, just hold it close, it's already not made about. No, it's, just forget. So there is, nobody interested, they can comment at this point, I'll close the public hearing and guess. One for a motion to recommend the zoning change to the city. Put it down.
So who, Alvin?
Swing day with motion, second.
There.
Okay, now. I'll go through the roll call vote. Alvin?
Yes.
Well.
Yeah.
Jamie?
Yes.
Kevin? Yes.
And Rick, yes. So we recommend to the council and. You.
So are there any, any other comments or questions from the council? Or hearing done, or someone? Want to make a motion?
Do we need to make a motion to the council with this? Did they? Oh, I see, okay, so I'll make a motion to. Bring this to the full council for. Second.
Okay. On the motion made by Councilor Preston, seconded by Councilor Wallace, to bring it forward out for approval. Any further deliberation on those? Well, we did a roll call. Councilor Preston?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Cameron, yes, so that would be three zero. And then with that, I'd like to start closing our session of the hearing.
Do you think?
Here, welcome to the room.
Action quicker. Oh, second.
Alvin, in favor, Councilor Preston?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Cameron, yes. Okay.
That's making the. Very new, all right, thank you.
Okay, then the next item is market landing park extension. And let's go inside, visitor facility for the site now. New application and application for this special tenant.
Thank you, so thank you, Chair Hager, and everyone on the board. So regardless of whether or not we're here, all materials that are being presented tonight are on the city's website. It's all available there, of course. With us tonight for the market landing park project, the city's project manager for the project. We have consultants and society who are with us. So I'd like to introduce Marin Breako and Jamie Valet, who'd like to just say hello to the group here.
Hello, I'm Marin Breako. Senior Associate and Project Manager for Market Landing Park. Hi, my name is Jamie Valet, I'm a civil engineer for Market Landing Park and with Sasaki.
Thank you. So we'll be speaking through some slides here, there are some supplemental documents and information, eco plans and so forth on the city's website, so we're happy to speak to those as well. Our intention is to give an overview of the project. This project, although it's extremely, it was minor scientific review, but because of its scale, obviously, we're looking at a side point area. So we'll run through some background of the project, city kills, the project we refer you up to speed. I haven't been tracking the ad hoc agreement with the city council and all the discussions that happened today. The project is to expand the central waterfront part, and so we'll run through these plans. Mary, you want to move this slide?
Sure. So our goal here tonight is to summarize the previous feedback we've heard, we've gotten a lot of input from various conversations with the city and through the ad hoc committee and community engagement. And then provide an overview of the park design as it's been refined, as we've been working on construction documentation in the last several months. Specifically, we'll highlight items related to circulation, inclusive design and resiliency. And then go over phasing. This project will be broken up into three phases, and so we can show you what that will look like as it's being built out.
This slide here is moving to our timeline, so without going into a great amount of detail. A fair amount of work has been done to date, developing these plans for those people involved, and we actually, the redevelopment authority, the install. Plan coming to the city, once the redevelopment authority coming to the city. The city council had appropriated, sort of, first priority was to designate bunk for the side of the park expansion. So there's a lot of background behind the redevelopment authority conclusion that the city's obligation. I think they're going to throw in the park space. This is all consistent with that. The timeline here is essentially that from last year, we did not use schematic, conceptual and schematic design, it's more detailed plans. The city council, through its ad hoc committee, it was established simply for this project. As they were doing the plans as they developed by Sasaki, and so what you're seeing here is consistent with that guidance. We got from the ad hoc committees, and we go for towards the details. Will also be specified, we're looking for clearly, there's one word that we expect to be illustrated back here. There is not sufficient funds to do the entire project that we're seeing here. So our plan is to be a very large space for it, and we'll summarize some of that during the coming slide. But where we are right now, the schedule is, we have gotten. Most of the feedback we need from the ad hoc committee in terms of the plans, but before we circle back with the ad hoc, and make sure that they're probably going to file details here, we do have to make sure that the playboard is stuck with the plans. And that because the playboard has site plan approval, the seed orders, and you'll be, such a permit for the, for the building. And one of the requests that we insisted for tonight was to, to us to continue with the outset of the, you know, the special permit here, that our calendar, you know, from the date of the schedule tonight. But the idea is to postpone that discussion until the twenty-first of the days of September, so that the architects have support about the work on that. Well, they didn't want us to start again, you know, the playboard was interested in a slightly different design of that building. To be more, maybe the market square area or that one. And so for that reason, we wanted society to actually work on that. And obviously, to be able to focus on the site plan, because the building itself is not a base by area. It is important for the product side, that we continue and try to lock down and do the plan details, the simple details, because a fair amount of work has to be done. After the playboards, to incorporate all that into fully shovel ready, the specs that we can set out, what we follow with her, for a quick straight construction. So that being said, we are hopeful that we can move along with the same plan, make whatever tweaks might be necessary to the playboard. And confirm that plan, even though the building, the design will take a little longer to come to satisfactory conclusion on. But I did provide to the council, a memo summarizing some of the guidance we got from the council, and sort of explanation as to why the plan is what it is. And so as you're thinking about the different criteria that we're at, regarding technical design, we hope that you can look at those, you know, the subsequent. This is just an aerial photograph, the existing conditions. It's, what you'll see in this photograph, just rely on where there are these, what I'm referring to is inertial loss space, it's my hand here. These are actually areas that we added in two thousand nineteen, grass space, they're temporary grass space, we thought, oh, some great adding. But basically, some moments here and a very shallow, very basic, in front of eight, in the line areas. Get focused, use for the expanded park space, and they'd be usable in the interim period. We just happened to coincide with pandemic, so some events during that time weren't quite as heavy as we invited them to expect. But that did set the stage for the park space. And a fair amount of this area is essentially even more, even more green. Also, as you put on this aerial photograph, are a couple of areas from the patch, and those are essentially waterfront areas where we have. Great, so, so we have a pedestrian path across the river. We're in the sculpture part, it's a little here, in the waterfront cross, there's the ball river side part, one. We have disintegration, sharing these paths, a couple of the area. So even though that is not safe, we are working with the waterfront cross, for the type of improvements that are needed in those spaces. The next slide here is the total plan, and there, I don't know if you, if you want to speak to us a little bit, I'm happy to do so well, but.
Sure, I'm happy to, you guys can hear me, okay, right?
Yes, I give you a little bit of light in the room, that'd be great.
Okay. So in terms of the big moves, the proposed, we have a talk was through this, I know the last time we saw you. And the shared use path running east-west through the site connects to the existing rail trail and to the boardwalk at the embayment. Along that path, there are moments of activation, which we'll go through in more detail later in the presentation. But that includes the area adjacent to the harbor master entry drive, Ferry Wharf Plaza, West Embayment Plaza, the Indigenous Peoples Plaza, and Sculpture Plaza. Also critical to this project is the preservation and expansion of the ways to the water. And so you can see the renaming of the upper and lower railroad ways in the center of the park. The expansion of Ferry Wharf Way from the city to the water, and then the renaming of Central Wharf Way. On the west side of the park. And then adjacent to that is the visitor center and restroom facility, which we'll also be reviewing in a little bit more detail later in the presentation. And so these design principles really came out of engagement and working with the city and the ad hoc committee early in the design process last year. And so the first being about program and creating an active and inclusive year-round destination within the park. Character being really important, make something that's really uniquely Newburyport and feels like it fits within its context. Connectivity, so stitching, sort of the balance between a working waterfront and this historic downtown. And then finally, from an environmental perspective, creating an edge that is resilient and sustainable along the water. And we've included these next couple of slides to review the input we heard during our concept and schematic design. And so there are two sort of major things that we studied during that phase, and the first being parking. And we had shared several options with the ad hoc committee and the public, and we had decided. That parking should be balanced on both the east and west side, and it should be sort of knitted into the landscape so that it becomes a park that happens to be, have parking. And not feeling like you're in a parking lot for much of the park experience. And then we had also studied several different alignments of the shared use path. And the consensus landed on this option, which is now in our proposed plan, that goes efficiently through the park and meets up with the boardwalk. And there are a number of other really important topics that we covered during that early phase, the first being dock storage, making sure that we're sort of. Making that efficient and convenient for the harbor master, but also minimizing that impact to the park. Providing sculptural and playful elements from dispersed throughout the park to create these moments of delight and discovery. Raising the topography to meet the existing burns along the water that have those beautiful coastal pines. And then materials and character that is, again, in keeping with Newburyport and durable. And so we have a handful of renderings, again, from that schematic design phase. This one is on the east side of the central embayment, and so looking down the shared use path, and you can see Ferry Wharf Plaza. Right here, there's a series of social seats designed for gathering. And then swing structure that will have both lounge seats and swing seats of people for, of different abilities and sort of different group sizes can gather. And we think this will really be an anchor to the phase one portion of the project. And then this is from Ferry Wharf Plaza, so as if you're in the middle of that plaza and being flanked by the swings on either side, looking out to the water. And you can see how that raised topography really starts to connect the park more directly to the waterfront. Moving to the west side of the park, so again, we're on the shared use path with the West Embayment Plaza. Over to the side here with a sculptural playful element activating the space.
Now, just to add for con, so this is the, the rear here to the right is, this is the market landing park, my left lawn space, three of the oil land, and central embankment.
And this is just a view right from the lawn space adjacent to the waterfront, showing more passive use of the park. And we have a series of sort of overview sides going into different types of circulation and furnishings across the park. So this one's focusing on pedestrian circulation. Obviously, the largest path through the park is that shared use path going through the center in red. And then after that being the ways and the boardwalk, so running perpendicular to the waterfront. And then those dashed orange lines represent those more like smaller connecting paths that take you from the parking lot and sort of across east-west to the park. After different areas of the park. And then, as I've mentioned, there are these moments of activation along those paths that allow for gathering. We've also included in here bike parking, so we have like three to six sort of clusters throughout the park. And there's an existing three adjacent to custom wharf way, and so we. Like to keep those so that be twenty proposed and three existing for a total of twenty-three. And then in terms of vehicular circulation, this was developed very, working very closely with the harbor master, the parking clerk, and the fire department. We had a series of stakeholder meetings in the last several months where we received input from them. And so access to the harbor master has been revised since the earlier phases of this project where you can. Drive in and turn around, and we've created sort of a, a back end area for the trucks going into the harbor master. On the east, or sorry, on the west lot, there's a one-way parking lot that allows people to cycle into the new parking and get into the existing parking. There are a handful of ADA spots dispersed throughout the parking, both parking lots are allowing for easy access to the water and to other site amenities. Again, most of all been reviewed with the parking clerk along with the EV parking, so there's two of the dedicated adjacent to the visitor center. And then we also had some stakeholder meetings with events, events planners that are very familiar with, with the park and use it regularly. And they've requested service parking in the east lot. So this will be for events when trucks come and need to make deliveries for events on the waterfront trust property. There's also a service spot for deliveries to the restaurants adjacent to the dumpster enclosure. And then there are a couple of short-term parking spots on the west side, one for drop-off to the visitor center. And then one for deliveries to the whale watching tours. And there's a spot there that we've maintained as open so that trucks can get in and out and have access to the whale watching tours. And this is just a summary of some of the landscape elements covered in the. Site plan review, so we've looked at the number of trees to parking ratios and will exceed those requirements. We've been thinking closely about buffer planting, so doing a mix of evergreen and deciduous, multi-layered planting in a couple of key areas. One of those is around the harbor master drive, since we know there'll be a lot of vehicular circulation, but we really think that could be a beautiful place to. To spend some time with the right sort of activation in that area. And then again, around the dumpster enclosure, we've made sure to provide sufficient planting to screen that area. And I'll just note that the open space here, you can see, has increased from sixty-one percent in existing conditions to eighty percent. And proposed, and a lot of that comes from the reduction in the size of the parking lots.
This was also a huge traffic and circulation, we agree, as well, the fact that there are not. Water. We're going to save it.
For light fixtures, we are needing matching existing, so there's a pedestrian. Light pole that's being used in the park, Columbus Park, and then in the parking lots, there's a big fixture, and we've been working with those manufacturers to incorporate into the proposed plan. The next slide here just highlights a couple of elements where we've thought about inclusive design. And so all of the furnishings that we're selecting have an option for wheelchair accessibility, so whether that means like an overhang or the reduction in the size. Of, or a number of benches to allow for someone, a wheelchair user, to have access to the same table. And then on the social seating steps adjacent to Ferry Wharf Plaza, there's a space so that a wheelchair user can pull up and sit right next to. A friend or family member on the granite stone seating. And so from here, I'll try to quickly go over just some of the design refinements, zoom in a little bit on different pieces of the park. So for this area next to the harbor master entry drive, where we have this buffer planting, we propose. Hammock poles and picnic tables so that you could be under the shade of trees, but really close to the water and sort of a quiet corner of the park.
If I could, some of it, when Marin is, when I'm here, I'm just gonna actually go back to one slide. One thing that some of us, I think we thought, obviously, is, where do you mind if we're on, this is the management of all that, right? So we're working together on, trying to phase in and stuff like that. But the, when you think about the hard grass, we're back to these typically, you know, we're bringing out the docks this location here, and so we've gone out and used the dock being stored at this location. They will be shipping the location, we'll see from the docks, and we're able to, for this, every year, there's been, they're opening the firm. And that new pedestrian path, we do the place for the greatest set of the docks to load it. And able to sort out land, like here, as well, here, and that's essentially to get a lot of the primary park space. As very, that's also provides, during the summer season, where the docks are under the water, for active space, for pedestrian, but not necessarily public. With the hard grass entry drive, where the, the.
Thank you for that clarification. And so this is looking at the Ferry Wharf Plaza, we've been developing in more detail these stone steps along with the swing trailer structures. So as we've been designing them, thinking about the structures, we've looked at, you know, identifying where we could introduce lounge or seat style swings. And we've started to break up the space to allow for circulation and around those structures in a way that I think really. Creates a really wonderful gathering space within the park.
I feel also to the bottom, you know, the survey you brought up here, and you might love what you're, actually, very well way to do. The fact, well, the second one, actually, the, a new operation, but this, that way, of large, we, so it makes us a lot larger. It's probably a play.
And then the Indigenous Peoples Plaza, this was a request from the city, they've been working closely with a historian in Newburyport to develop a space dedicated to the history. And current communities of indigenous people in Newburyport, so looking to provide a space that could. Acknowledge that history with educational signage. Acknowledge that history with educational signage and also create a space for ceremonies to happen. Today. And so it's intended to be really sort of. Meditative and contemplative space. It was really important from the perspective of the historian, the city was working with. That it be circular in shape and that include. Stone. Paving and sculptural elements that were designed by an artist that the city will commission. And then the delivery area and dumpster enclosure. Again, this. We're working closely with the firehouse and some other folks at the city to understand sort of what the needs are and how we could make the space function the most efficiently. And we've landed here with the dumpster enclosure that's appropriately sized for the needs. Of the city and the restaurants and then a delivery area adjacent to that and space for. The. Trucks to back in and remove recycling and waste and not be in the way of the parking spots.
I know what else had you just. Right now, there's a simple concrete walkway here and this can be replaced with a traditional red walkway. And so we might have attracted which we can find where's where. We had a separately managed project with part of the public services. The plan is to fund the capital receiving a. Cooperation with this, the covert that is planned for market square. Sometimes uploading that in market square. So the idea is to put a martyr fight here, basically between the buildings here where the old pocket walkways. Put in a couple years ago to. Put that over in there, going down to the parking lot to existing outfalls, increasing the amount of water in the major markets where we burn. The city of Newbury. And we're, you know, pointing efforts in the bulkhead project, part project. And this one, but our intention is to bury that pipe before we put the walkway, a traditional, you know, some of our work walkway on top of that.
And then moving on to the visitor center and restroom facility. Again, this will be reviewed separately, sort of the building location and enclosure. A lot of, been a lot of. Input in the last couple of months and. There are a number of things that are set and number of things that we are still working on and will come back to. To focus on the facility, but we did want to speak briefly about the landscape surrounding the visitor center. And so, so if you go to the next side.
Yeah, sorry, I can just. In this slide, you're seeing a couple of things. So the, there was some dialogue previously just a little bit of footprint. One thing that you'll see here is the small label of the FFB finished floor elevation of fifteen point three three. That is then a coordination with us both the visiting committee and the board get how to get building as far out of the spot for us. We're having those, we think about silverized, people flooding and what that might mean for maybe getting up the American extreme or market square. We, this is again a twenty-seven to a hundred, but planning ahead for that. So if you don't have a building, we have to relocate leaders. The plan here is to raise that pretty full elevation, the elevation to three point three three. Place to make both the very much that much more feasible when it's getting further back. It also keeps it further out of the existing blood zone. Obviously, no one here for the future silverize that has been protected. The structure and again, as very mentioned, we're doing with the side of that structure. Buildings can be designed so that it can also be great or easily raised with the church if that's necessary and as additional backup. And as Meredith became displayed, it's showing the footprint of a building that has largely decided to be back to the city council that, honestly. And when we played more to move it forward, we have the building designed, we're obviously working on that a little more. Point where it also noted that the doors, you have the programming of this side of the interior program. It requires doors, some of doors based out of the backside. But in essence, because of that, we're looking for some landscaping here separate from the structure. And so that like the speed to here, but when we're sure of that, this plan, we're hoping that we can. Prevent too many details here is the footprint of the building that's associated with the state of the direction of that facility. Showed on the plan, shown the plaza and sidewalk and access points and so forth, the conference space that makes sense. And what they've done around here is sort of an envelope with the understanding that it should decide that be approved. It would be the building that goes in that footprint, people talking about playboards designer view. Come weeks, but that we would all know where that would be going regardless of its design and its very. Most people just a moment, the type of screening and everything will be helpful in the party perspective. So that you're effectively building. The fact that the doors based now, certain doors on the side that the pedestrians would necessarily be feeling that.
Thank you, Andy. And so this is a view from Merrimack Street. So looking west. Towards the visitor center. And so you can see it's been designed so that the visitor center really is visible from Merrimack Street coming from this angle. And the restroom facilities are really screened back and we have some more detailed studies that we can show in that area, but. The idea is to this to be a really welcoming place for folks as they enter into the city of Newburyport. And then from this side. It is much more of a planted edge, helping to sort of make up that grade. So that's a sloping area as Andy mentioned. The existing grade serve on this pavement is around eleven or twelve. And then the building is getting up to fifteen point three three. So that sloping planting areas helping us make up that grade. And also providing a lot of shade and thermal comfort for the plaza.
Sorry, this is. Go back here. If we're looking at the plan, you're actually standing here. So you're sort of coming out of the circle of its way. It's not, I know you might be, it's a little awkward from that angle because you look to playing that. But you're basically standing in this spot. It's really actually.
And then some of the feedback we've received recently was about screening of the restroom entries. As, as Andy may have mentioned earlier, and the. And the idea is that each of these bathroom entries is an individual stalls or unisex so that anyone can use them. But the doors are going right out to the plaza. And we heard concern that there'd be this. You know, tension between someone sitting at the cafe seating in the plaza and people going in and out of the bathroom. And so we've done a couple of studies to look at how to resolve that. The first one looked at more of an architectural approach. So a screen, architectural screen that related to the building. And just provided that screening with vine growing up it. And then the second one, if you scroll over, looks at more of a. Off floor landscape approach. So actually, if you zoom out to show both the plan and the rendering, would be great. So in this one, we've reconfigured the plan slightly so that we've increased the plaza space. That's in alignment with the visitor center. So that the cafe seating is really feels like it's part of that space. And then the space adjacent to the restroom entries is this. Larger landscape buffer area. So then if you go to the next slide. And so through a review with the city in the last couple of weeks, we've landed on more of a hybrid option where we've revised the shape of the plaza. Added that additional landscape planting, but also have a screen behind. And that treatment would be the same on the other side of the restroom facility as well.
Yeah, I'm correct. I guess the distinction will refine to get to here in the transportation board. Well, it's like the approval that distinguishes what the building is. We understood that even irrespective of the goal design, unless you're actually going back and having a session with the council about changing the program inside. Maybe result in changing the program of the individual doors stepping out of the backside of this building. We understood because there was concern about visibility of that end with doors and a feeling that may not be the best thing to put apart. There was an understanding that perhaps site level improvement is the very core of the category. When it makes sense to, so while it is relevant to the end of things, we understood from a site plan perspective that you will be looking for those details now. In relation to site plans. That's the reason why we felt appropriate to speak to the landscape in the Michael that area, even though we're building architect itself.
We haven't seen a timeline this yet.
Correct. This is the first, this is the first illustration you can stand correct on the black and white drawings for the product design. This is still yet, because this has been refined in design and detail since the seventy-five percent plan can. For a few at this point, they would be bottomless, like any other application we would want to bottom line during the process. And revise such that the final report will reflect those in detail. So when you're seeing here in the rendered graphic, then we'll be run the side and change some of the points.
So, so we will at some point be discussing this.
Correct and correct. And again, we just wanted to make sure that the board, that the, our understanding, the words about the city and area and irrespective of. There are ways of creating that from a landscape perspective. For that reason, that's the force really going on in the site plan. You and and so the buyer point. Again, it's that.
Sure. So just briefly to touch on the resiliency strategies for the building. As you've mentioned, the elevation was set to fifteen point three three, and that was based on input from conservation commission. To be at the FEMA flood elevation of twelve plus forty inches. That sets us up for full protection from the twenty seventy-one percent flood event. The building was also moved to the outside of the flood zone and has been designed so that it can be easily lifted if needed in the future and raised. And so now we'll move into phasing and understanding interim conditions for the project implementation. And so this is all three phases here compiled on one plan. So phase one really focuses on the waterfront park and the connection to the ways. Phase two is primarily the parking lots on either side. And then phase three includes the visitor center and the surrounding landscape.
And we had, we have something slide to bring this back to focus more particularly on the fade one, we switch it will be. Start this period back here, but obviously very. This is planned for the entire site. Irrespective of how it's based in the strike and these phases, we're keeping more vibrant detail of that. Of plants or inside, but these spaces nowadays have largely informed by the available legend. And feedback and that's a lot of where the priorities are. So this is like Meredith said, focus on the park space first, park areas second. And the building, they also be running from all different sources that say, yeah, their grants that are going to the park space. Here, let's see page one. This important part, obviously, right, is the shared use back going through. Earlier, the whole fleet of Firework Way is. Of dialogue and redevelopment authority with the path of the city to include this pedestrian pathway. One of it is not necessarily allowed to do the completion, but it's assistively prior discussion of having a dedicated plan estimation. Across the so-called Blue Forest Street and the Parkland. And so this puts that pedestrian walkway there as well. All of them, of course, particularly wherever they can consider you to be destined for a square or. Whereabouts you are, as we also talked about, you're worried about using the water and a few that perhaps most want to head down. The reasons the parking areas included, not included right now, again, this is based on our estimates. Our, our process then, and we will do the question again. So if we get very good bids and we're able to do more work, and so we expect that network. Again, jumping on the market committee, that's what it's so important, there's even around boundaries. We are not necessarily doing the dump area in between and then temporary lawn space for the section staying here today. And if you love us putting it, we'll do the previous sort of grass gated. Structure is simply like a plastic grid with grass going through it. And that area has been called on our plan. So that the vehicles that come down to set up for events at the central water plant, whether that's staged or not, or otherwise, but they have a space to do that. This is a proper statement that we want to plus those who are on events and the parking clerk. And the idea here is to try to still provide that space and relatively same proximity as in one before. Without necessarily taking out the remaining public parking spaces in the parking lot. So this would be second to buy some of the docks or a dual space when it's beautiful vehicles. They could use those larger events and take it off the parking lots of the first phase and they're still preserved. But we're not even used to still using this law in our space. And there is a business base we had as well that to the intro side, probably generally speaking, we would expect. The plaza would not be played here. We have, we have a shell area there as fans table that I tell us people. Do it far as staying, you would have been a part of page one in order to front that part of this here. Would be the trailer, the trail is there and the visitor would, as long as this table. With that, I guess we turn to the board and we have a question.
Number four, and any questions?
So on that last. I had to get a screen. Now it is, now it is. Is it okay?
Yes.
So just on that last point, I didn't see that the other temporary restroom meaningful is in the phase one area. Then it's best like that's going to be removed in phase one.
Correct. You so-called temporary, it was better for a while, right? Trailer would be removed and the shed, the visitor booth shed could also be removed as part of that. They're actually in the way of some part. And we had that discussion about sort of project costs about relocating that, putting in the seashell, you know, sort of area. Or as needed, putting in fortified with things like that. And it seems more likely, you know, generally speaking, anytime it's demonstrated to others. Seems to make more sense if you take that structure out perfectly and feel different facilities. And then what should be appropriate facility when that's appropriate or if you want it, rather than trying to sort of make it possible to move that temporary trailer to another temporary location. Where it's awkwardly next to the park. Any of that, that's what I was like, if there's an interim solution there.
I think another question to clarify. The area. Jason, the boardwalk where there's the burn, they've talked about raising the. The land behind that, is that being raised to the same level as the top of the burn?
Yeah, it wasn't a great sort of tampering at the edge of course, coming down the walkways, but correct, generally speaking, we're bringing it up the same bridge. Then the chairs are up here today, these folks are basically, if there's any amount of raised areas, would be the same elevation, not the same bend if we were to move the water. As we can see on the landscape plan, there are some public graphic lines that can be sort of burning. And that's because we're bringing that grade back down again for the walkways. We are not raising the boardwalk and so we're exceeding existing grades. At each of those points. That's why the grade is back down for the walkway is true set. And yeah, I was trying to sort out those lines on there. It's about the actual glass area in there is level to the top of the burn. Yeah, Barry, what a review it was, generally speaking, other than the slopes.
I'm sorry, that last part was a little hard to hear. The question was just about the grading.
Yeah, the grading in this area. So the pain here, the locating, you know, approximate control line. We're bringing up this grade here and will there might be some variation in this? I think we're essentially coming up to the same height as that burn here. But of course, it's typically back down again to walkways.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and so the the level of the shared using cap, is that at the same level as the burn?
Oh, that's lower. And I think that's the meaning, the city boardwalk here. Uh and I think that's needing the city boardwalk here, uh a lot way to be here and a sponsor park that exists. You know, elevated for the most part, we are uh for the purpose of resilience, uh we will get some supplemental information to the board of this. Uh we are trying where possible to raise part phase. Um but keep in mind, this is a pretty typical of any resilience here or civilized discussion. Uh that we have, we don't control the basic properties uh necessarily directly. So um there's a limit to how much we can do with grading in the law lines, both to meet those existing grades and not have access issues. Uh but also to accept the costs like you're associating that fill across our site. Um and some of that is that games out. So in thought here, I think it's in, in order to get these part improvements and incremental improvements. Uh we have discussed for the ball head project because it's ideal. Uh we have talked about the ball head desire of essentially the future, we went when the time is right. Uh the ball head project, by the way, is including a larger wall or higher wall. Uh to affect to override that part as well. Uh but where our plan will turn, we need to raise that boardwalk off of the existing structure. So by putting the uh under that project. The fiberglass reinforced panels uh and the R P and the concrete backing. Uh similar to what you see on this sector, by the way, the boardwalk today, that protected their stay, like that being raised, so higher. If you wrap around the bay then and come around here. Um that will better protect the existing steel structure and the cells uh that are supporting the boardwalk here. And the uh walls with tieback rods that are in the central native. And by protecting that, we'll be able to save structure decades and decades in the future, uh because it won't be deteriorated.
Okay, and so given the shared use path is a bit lower than the entire uh steep. Um ramp effect to the new basin. Then it's not being raised to the same level as the burn.
Right, I I think about your this photograph, this justice, but I think you wouldn't have any problems in the water. That's the that was one of the.
That was. Doesn't look like in that picture.
Understood, yeah. And I don't know, perhaps we can get some more van point, those things would be better uh in that you're. Um the intent is not to block you, it's sort of like a shared use path that I go up uh there and hide.
Thanks. The other uh other question I got was, it seems that the uh bicycle rack placement is mostly on the west side. Very minimal on the east side. I was just wondering if there would be further additional bike racks.
I'm sure we'll definitely go with that. Uh if you have any other suggestions, we'd like to know what I can do.
I think I think we've got three. Two spaces on the upside, but there, I think those are gone. Black and white. I think that's accessing to the front of the area. So I think that I don't think those three are are there in the.
It might be, it might be accidents in this spot, but we'll try to leave it at every store. Your boy, oh, it's.
I was also concerned that that rack is a little ways away from the shared use path, so not having access.
I had some suggestions, but we'll get that.
Um, um, the other question on the parking, it looks like in the plan that they need. There's some reserve parking behind the buildings and they go along water stream. And um so those are largely there, except it looks like those have been reduced by nineteen twenty-three water stream. Uh here and right there, yes.
Yeah, they they there certainly, there is a reconfiguration of these spaces, but those spaces that are.
So those reserved spaces are staying, it looks like it's.
Uh yeah, I have to go back and look at me. We're basically remaining, we're keeping the same number of spaces associated with the units there, they're just being reconfigured.
Um and then I know that there's only two uh E V stations there. I was wondering if. Um if there could be more, it seems like that would be good planning for the future or does it hear the uh additional ones could be added very easily.
Sure, I I will call the city filtration uh the city filtration we've been working with. Uh and all the energy sustainability coordinator have been talking about what about buying the whole two uh chargers, well, three chargers. Uh and plenty spaces in this project we're setting aside for additional installation versus uh on its one for future conditions. Uh we can make one of that as well to see what like to set it at now, which definitely is.
And since you have the circulation plan up there now, it looks like on the west block, the circulation. The way that's drawn on there, it's like you're adding some back. Essentially, but so one way, long way now. Um that one walk with all the back spaces is the intent that they would circle around and put it back.
Uh yeah, sorry, I think this is actually, so uh folks coming in today would come in from the street, headed this way. And instead of being able to come into that bowl, basically today, you're heading one way, head out this way, and when you come here. Wouldn't go look back this way, this is still one way, or rather, uh this is just indicated if you quit. Uh if you're coming this way, come down here and this would circulate around. So this is because, I mean, I say I'm tired in Riverside Park a lot. Part of the party lot.
It seems to actually be.
Uh this. Yeah, and maybe it looks like it's moving back this way. Uh yeah, perhaps that's more of a graph or representation there. If you want to skip to that, at least. We're not voting to change the traffic certainly better in Riverside Park rather than just within this lot because it's been reduced since that's the advantage side. Right, that the cars come through one way. Uh and this essentially becomes instead of a two-way crossing, some of these ways becomes one way, a thorough crossing. Uh and effectively cars coming here, but they don't go this way, they have to go around this way. Barry, you uh if you want to do that.
Yeah. Yeah. You interpreted it correctly.
Um then uh my biggest. Just want. Can the existing trees or when they're removed?
I hope you don't have. For comparison plan, but say we want to try to preserve as much as possible trees, so where there are some slight impact this area here. Uh and here we go again, it's just connected to that, but I think other than that, there's nothing that comes to mind to be there is. You've actually spent a fair amount of time looking at this area, you're trying to create that accessible path without taking out trees. Barry, do you want to?
I'm sorry, it's a little hard to hear, but I would say that we have a full, um it's clear in the seventy-five percent set, which trees we're preserving and which we are. Uh needing to remove from a grading perspective. Um and as Andy said, we've been, you know, working hard to try to preserve as many as possible in the existing.
If you want to just determine the existing photograph, which. Uh it's it's this location here where we're coming in. Uh I forget if you know about it, if there's a break, we have to make it. Long way come through on both sides. Uh and as I mentioned here, it's a sort of large trees. Um so uh so really those new areas and everything else. Uh such as parking lot or somebody wants is that great. But we did want to add that in terms of our that are somewhat established.
All right, that is what I saw. The impact that there's also a large electrical box right in the areas that you're looking at.
Correct, right here, you know.
Thank you.
So there are questions for. Just a little quick one. And can you zoom in on the end of the shared use path? Wondering there. Seems like if I'm on a bicycle. And I'm on a clearly.
I think more directly.
I'm getting delivered on the sidewalk. And and I'm just wondering, is there a way that maybe it is for these bicycles to get out on the. Auto vehicles, but you couldn't run with it in the sidewalk.
Yeah. Yes, and you're.
Right, and separate paper brought that up as well. We have uh internally had some discussions with society, actually going to look at this. Having a project we want to avoid, but uh one of the things we talked about, I think, to be your point is. Uh we had originally assumed, you know, perhaps over a curb light here, uh to be close, you know, took directly still right in the drive aisle. Uh but recognizing that is just a sidewalk today, it's necessarily a little car just back from the left. Um rather to tip this down to grade so that folks who are coming here could take that diagonal route uh from here as they might tell them to do. Your point. Um and so we might make a change to that to address that concern without necessarily. Uh again, it would be forced to go that way, but it's said more of a cue that their option is also to go this way. Um they also look at it's possibly putting a couple of roads in here, so we better comply there. Um you know, for safety purposes, but uh we understand the concern there that uh we necessarily want to funnel everybody to something that uh. Huge that they can't get up here where that's going to tighten and has that blocks there.
And I'm also following this comment about the parking lot. It just. I think I made this comment the last time as well, that it for. You know, the parking lot of these sites, it seems like the circulation is very.
Are you thinking specifically of the west side or the west sidewalk?
Yeah.
Yeah, I got you. I mean.
I mean, this seems kind of. Yeah. You know, the diagram that shows cars, you know, reverse backs into one way, it's just. You know, I'm not sure if it's really been thought out and simplified as much as it quickly. Uh I've always felt that that lock that is showing inward as part of this debate. Uh it's very disconnected from the rest of the park. Uh doesn't feel like it's a lock that's been used during the week. There's longer process, there's more of a kind of individual parking there. But it it just feels like a certain edge and in and out of it, particularly with the kind of. With that one way drive, it just seems very.
Sure, uh yeah, I I can appreciate having no one to know various conditions in this area. The part of that, uh awkwardness be well, and then we've also got used with the circulation pattern here, it's largely from the Riverside Park area. Um as we're as we've opened the shrinking of our Harvey lot in the city of the NRA, it was NRA or our invest lot. Uh she really affected me because of the two days, the one sort of drive out. Um so that's uh for the most part, I think, relatively logical, but it's perhaps going here where the inclusion is. And uh we don't directly control that piece, we can sort of discuss if we want to trust more, we're not going to make some tweaks. Uh in our area, but we wouldn't necessarily be able to force a configuration.
This is a lot of confidence that's seen once in that lot. We'll really have to make choices that are really young. And there's just a kind of confidence, there's a lot of traffic there at two moments. And it's it's just not very significant. Um one one last uh forward subject to comment, I realize we're not talking about the people tonight, but. I can just say one thing about that, the images that we've seen so far. Uh and it's just a suggestion, it's not really a kind of a discussion. Um that it's it feels very deliberately quiet when it could be. Uh something more fun or anything more about moving record. And I I just. It feels like a good thought. We we suck the one three dimensional building element together play with. And it it feels like it could be more.
So activation and also you're leaving the garbage itself.
We have to be, we have to be careful not going too far.
I'm sorry.
Is the motor list exactly. If we start talking about this, then everybody who's not here is going to have to watch this. Are there any questions? So uh I want to just get through this quickly and then do a couple of notions. I have a numerous questions that they will see related to black and white seventy-five percent lines. And one of the things I want to talk about before we finish is probably. But just in terms of the conceptual. I I have maybe five questions that I'm just going to raise. The first question is, uh at the last meeting, um somebody from the consulting team talked about. Fifty inches by sea level line by twenty-seven, about forty inches. And I know that that was, that the four inches was discovered at the time of the day. But at some point, I would like to have some, not to my personal, some response that the wire or no, not like. If that's the number that society or or news group or whatever was wearing. Um the second question, the question I that that I think we talked about, great, the level was green bike racks. It seemed to have been removed from the plan. Uh and and whether the, because it's shown in the presentation, but I don't think it was shown in the seventy-five percent. Uh third question is. I'm not clear what's happening to parking areas during phase one. Something has to be done with her. You're actually doing some work, you're reconfiguring. Uh so there's actually some place where it happened here, but uh so I'd like to know that at some point. Um the fourth question is, especially the product. Give a comment on that. The pedestrian, the pedestrian circulation advice to the parking plan in this presentation. Showing continuous period is better. It was not the in the shared use path. Just want that very clearly that that's been taken off the plan. Uh and I I see a lot of problems with it, even if I suppose that a lot of the bikes are private. Uh I suspect with them walking the phone, walking the lights across the park, there's something to go out with. Um so and I think that in some moment. We're going to have to do much on that part where it's alive. Um and then the last question, which is actually from the black and white man's. But the link to how this space will be used, so I don't have to ask the consultant, what you're willing to do right now. Uh in the black and white man's materials plan, there is a particular pavement. Adjacent to the shared use path, at least on the west side of the uh of the park. And then that's been leveled. Um further away, which raises the question, is is the intent? To use part of that shared use path, the particular access, perhaps it hasn't been talked about in a thing. Not, but there is, you know, had that, and it's actually in the section for the for the design of the shared use path that actually showed. Uh standard table as well. So I was just wondering what.
Well, yeah. Yeah, there there are some expectations here and I I don't know if Eric, maybe JP and Steve wants to see this side here, but generally speaking, we are kind of accompanied a couple. Think of overall saying, I in this area. Um what is our fire department access, where do you be? Uh you know, and their their truck that talks to the runs. Uh hydrants, uh the harbor master, uh those who are the boats, uh so. Uh for the four boats, where it's that access that was mentioned here, uh the curb line in the parking lot. Uh for uh the periodic uh use of our vehicles that come down here, basically allowing them to do what they do today. Uh on a periodic basis, a part of that would be a programming and monitoring it from the large part of the city. Uh as far as you know, what's acceptable, but our were designing them to be able to hold some of those heavier vehicles. Uh the shared use path, for instance, is either the same that our shared use path, although the. Bay one, the bases of the city rail trail are. Um Jay, you're there and you were happy with it or?
Yeah, so I mean, the shared use path. We have always thought about that as a fire truck access. Um and so the path itself is intended to be the same width as the existing path, so that's ten feet. And then providing an extra two feet with that uh stone pavers on. Besides where it's needed, where it's not adjacent to a puzzle. And that's been reviewed again with the fire department um back in March.
So actually, uh that, I think on the very west end of the street. It's more of a. So is that designed to allow somebody to come from the. The kayak now. To get positive shit, to get a truck in here in the background. See the, actually this part of the scene is the projection. Yeah, P A twenty is the particular, P A twenty-one is that's. Somewhat weird to actually fly. I was just wondering why, why it's so wide, so the answer was is to get some public safer vehicles. In from the kayak that.
This would be one of those access points. Uh we haven't uh determined the exact needs of those here, but this is also the small for park. I don't know in the extent which I don't think we're placing anything here, but certainly compared to my school businesses. Uh we really play like people getting exposed to here in this area. Uh but uh but again, Barry, you know, that all.
Yeah, again, so that was just to provide um that extra vehicular pavement adjacent to the shared use path. Yeah, again, so that was just to provide, um, that extra vehicular pavement adjacent to the shared use path.
So, uh, what I would like to do now, where there's any questions, we might have some time for public questions and comments. But I'd like to take care of three of the three of our first. And those are three motions that we would need to do. One of the motions postponed the downtown, or the district special permit here in, to the September twenty first. Right on motion for that.
So I'll do.
Sir, sir. Okay, thank you. Um, I'll take, we'll call on that. So, yes. Bob?
Yeah.
Jamie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Ricky, yes. Well, thank you. The second thing, would it actually get us to the point of actually formally accepting this as a, an application? There were a number of waivers that were requested. Yeah. Wouldn't happen in front of you, you know? So waivers were, uh, and there was justification given for waivers. Uh, there were three reports that were requested waivers done. The environmental and community impact, the traffic impact report and a report of soil surface and groundwater pollution. And we, uh, to grant those waivers, if we want to accept the plan right now for the, for consideration. Does anybody have any questions about those three things? Thank you.
Yeah. So what, what is the, I'm sorry, because I'm beginning to lose the nose, I don't remember. But what is the, what is going to be the review of stormwater management? Great question. Uh, we actually have provided this, uh, what is the open go, uh, platform for you, uh, or the private platform. Uh, the stormwater manager report, as is typical, uh, is, uh, a full report showing how we're dealing with stormwater on the site, at the areas and so forth. Uh, it's seventy five percent plans that are posted and all the details, uh, will be much up to a hundred percent. It's gonna be, but, uh, in this case, uh, typically the playground is, uh, is asking other book critics, it was pretty frequently to review plans on the half of the board and looking at the support. Uh, because the city engineer has already been involved heavily in the sub water plant, uh, where it's integrated and so forth. Um, he's, he's thinks that's very important area and he will go through. So he's actually reviewing, uh, society and V H B work on this. And so he is actually reviewing that's the water management plan, but it's the same exact, what was the water analysis? Uh, what was, the question here was just relative to the, uh, the, the fact that, uh, doing the prisms of soils. We have a licensed site professional who's on site, who's overseeing the work, that means, so all that could be used to maintain areas. East and west slots. So because all of that is according to the state guidelines and the L S P is the one that's overseeing that. Uh, but we obviously are having a plan, I think, important to get it, uh, from process. All of that is overseen by a state process, uh, professionals in that area and having the case to store water, a professional, uh, experienced in that piece. Uh, you would expect a playground that could have the city of here, uh, is is vitalizing this right now to less that. So what, what you go call it, putting the cycling and, uh, we have, uh, our post value for this right now, but it's been having a role with. Uh, I don't want to see that one, but, uh, so I can, but that was smart here.
So, so the stormwater report is still being done. So, if there are no other questions about this, I'd like a motion to grant the requesting waivers of this middle requirements found in section fifteen E is required by the. So was I moved over, sorry, sir, sir. Uh, so I think the vote of that, oh.
Yes.
Wow. Yeah. Kim?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Ricky, yes. Okay, then the final motion I'd like is to, now that we've granted those waivers. To determine the application for minor site manner, do the part of that, our extension and restroom slash visitor facility playing for there actually has a complete, including waiver before that, it's a middle of work. This is actually that, we, we're not, action to actually bring it into our, almost like. Any questions?
This is a difficult protocol for the board, just to make sure we have the information we're looking for. As a gentleman, we, we outlined the specific waivers we were looking for, uh, where we didn't feel was necessarily beneficial to the nature of the project, because it's not traffic report, uh, because we're actually reducing part of what I actually creating part here or traffic circulation. I'll move it. Move it with maybe applications.
Can you explain the lines?
So, um, we, in order to start the process, the site manner, we, we have to determine the. This is the formal determination, this is the, except for the second. If we have not granted waivers, we could not determine these. So, sir.
I'm, I'm not. I'm just, yeah, I'm not here on this.
This is, uh. No, this is on the, the site, site plan of all that. The site plan is called market then by extension of those individuals. I would not do with the downtown, or the English, the special permit for the building. This is just for the site. Looking at the, the ground line.
I guess, would say you completely don't have that information as far as in building that supplement in the coming days. What you're reading at the point first, uh, by society, um, and what they're mentioned, this is really just to have the information we put in the site plan. Uh, recognizing the building, uh, details are about what's out, especially you're reading without, if that was a good way first, and you have in regard to whether it's we are, that, um, with that with this gap there.
Right. So, and there, there are proceedings to apply or develop development and recommend the changes.
Oh, yeah. And so the intent, we've recorded these later on, see, this, and you will continue the site plan to.
I use it, that was that, if, uh, depending on what, what, the discussion hour that we started, and that's partly based on this, kind of society, we need, uh, you know, since we know that two weeks to do some plane location, hopefully, come back on the seventh, because a lot of the different plans of condensed reading. Uh, if that, first of all, reasons doesn't seem like a good timeline either from the board's feedback or society, to, uh, Barrett, to this, from there. You make the tweaks to the planes, because I see two on, uh, advanced. Uh, we would then post all of the, so you know, the team, the point first, where we align with, uh, to this sort of period. Uh, again, as a project manager, I've been hoping to proceed along with the site plan approval and to confirm details there. And because it's the most present, uh, aspect of the project, get it up, you know, the, the page one. Uh, and you can, you can make some progress there and then you just the street, uh, the beginning of the statue, the building itself and ask that side of all of this, you guys, this, did not watch out. Not approving the site plan, so I will just correct, just saying it's completely, it's just that you have the information you need to review. Exactly. So we can still ask for additional things, however, probably not the three things being split through that we don't have.
You know, what I, I structured for you, I got the questions. And then, once we do this, we can actually start to, I didn't say, we, we sort of got into it a little bit, you know, say, there's a specific thing that I want to say. Still looking for. But, uh, although it's in favor of the motion to determine the applications completely accepted for consideration. All of them.
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Heather? And Ricky, yes. So at this point, I think I would like to, before we get into formal word consideration of the application, I would like to put in the public here for, uh, comment and questions. Whoever's here or whoever's up there.
Uh, so those votes at home, if there's anybody there in the city, you can do the, do the rule, do just raise your hand. Um, and I hope that the voters would like to, uh, here.
Um, we should.
You can come to the podium, so that the, uh, the, the vote for the four agents, I told you, because softly for that one, that's probably more of the priority.
My name is Johnnie Doors.
Donald Doors?
Yes. And, um, I have been, I spend a lot of time on the waterfront, enjoying sitting on the berm, watching the view, people watching, and it seems like we notice that people are always moving the head around that chairs so that they're in the shade. And I'm, I can be in the sun, so I'm one of them. I have to always move it into a shady spot. Well, we were at a gunpoint beach and they have this awesome chitauri that has all that one, that cheers underneath it. It's right in front of the ocean. And it's really secure because it's right at the beach. And I thought, that would be an awesome idea to have all that berm shaded. So I just wanted to make that suggestion. Um.
I do.
Okay. Donna, what's your address? I'm your address, my address. It's one very next street. We're right across the street. Thank you. So, so the. The park is actually my best, yeah. We're always open to you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, it looks like we use the mic very, very.
I'm Leslie at Cold Thirty Six Warren Street. Probably too late to talk about this, but I still want to bring it up. The Ferryworth Wa, uh, Ferryworth Plaza. I really wish that this were an area rather than with the swings. It would be a covered canopy where people could sit in the shade to get out of the rain. Um, you know, have it as a more multi-purpose area, even possibly an area where you could have a, a book sale or a flower show or something like that. I, I bothers me that it's just devoted to sitting and then I think it could be more multi-purpose. And I think it could offer shelter from the rain.
Don't forget, again, when they get ready to loan, this area comes forward.
Okay, there, there are no more, uh, financial questions, uh, presence of others in the room. States, uh, remotely floating in the, I just put the public commentary, this is, I would imagine, continuing the public area to another new standard by the time you finished. So, supposed to public comment period for now, and get away with it, detail later on. So at this point, I guess, uh.
Chair, you invented the light and white, and I pulled up, uh, just the excerpt from, uh, two of the answers.
Well, I guess I, like, know the words, uh, preference at this point. I don't know what you've had a chance to get into the, not some both of the black and white plans. Um, would you want, if you were there to discuss anything specific tonight? I have a few specifics that I, I could do, but I don't know if anybody else has. Thinking you would, would find a way of that, um, the first needs, gentlemen.
I have a few specific thoughts, but I, I also didn't get all, I didn't get all the way through the black and white parts. Yeah, I could too, because it, it was a bit hard to see them on my screen.
Well, that makes sense, okay, great, we're talking some true.
I, I have not been following you much in time, which, uh, one thing I'm looking for is understanding the law and the good kind of favor. For you, and what's being, like, that's really very important.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. What do you have, especially though?
Um, or raise, I guess, I have a couple of comments. Uh, I just think, that's not the aim, could be a longer discussion, so let's start with. Yeah, I just, I, which one? Um, I, I just wanted to comment that I like the seating area that in the recommended plan for the visiting center where it's groomed towards, uh, I don't know next street there. I think that's a, a better location for that because when you, like, during, you have food trucks along the perimeter, having the seating area right close by that, I think is essentially, uh, compared with how long it's spread out along, there's more, I do like that. Um, uh, one of my concerns is with the shared use path. I wanted second Rick's comment where they showed on the diagram the continuous, that's created by school room through, uh, and it's not contiguous. Um, one of the points of site plan review calls for maximizing the conveniences and safety of bicycle descent movement in the site. And I don't think, I don't think this plan is doing that in the shared use path. I think, I also think that the, I am concerned about the elevation of the shared use path. Whereas lower there, I do think that blocks, blocks the view towards the water where you're raising the area uh, between the shared use path and the waterfront. I would, I would think we'd be better at the same level, and even if that requires a longer ramp down, uh, potential. But I don't think we should have that right there. Okay, that's like, oh, and sorry, for clarification, we say we're having the gray change, the gray change from that area staring down to where you're, you're forcing it into the pedestrians. I don't want to speak anything really, I don't, but I'll always like to wait for me.
Well, I, I'm sure that's a. Comment, for the comments, is there a question, is there a question there or not?
No, never the question.
So I think, I think that's, just, um, question, you know, needed in the present period, period is.
Sure. Uh, Merritt and Amy, you want to speak this a little bit, uh, based on the, uh, you know, first, we have a shared use path and being over the bikes, uh, that, you know, you're, you're recording, they want, basically, they're focusing on it. Uh, we have the brick lotways, we've built, we've developed the smaller standard here, but we speak a little bit more to the different standards. Uh, for those, like, care out, uh, you mean, um, you know, whoever is expecting load, some sort of. Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. We have, we have concrete with the type of brick lotways, or some sort of, or, uh, trying to use some of that.
I'm sorry, it is a little bit hard to hear, but I think you're asking, oh, I just heard a bunch of feedback. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, the question was about the material being, it was a site level material, so I haven't. Can hang around, but you, you can speak when. Those here, uh, for the period.
Sure. So the shared use path will be asphalt and that's meeting the existing uh, details that have been shared with us from the city. Um, and that will be vehicular grade, as we discussed, in order to provide, uh, access for fire trucks. Uh, the ways to the water will be brick and that we have a combination of vehicular and pedestrian. Where we need vehicular access, we've made a, a concrete base, a thickened slab uh, to reinforce that and provide additional loading. Uh, in areas where we don't need that, we're trying to save money and be efficient with, uh, that sub base. So, um, there are areas that are slightly darker shade where we have pedestrian brick. And then for each of the plazas, we've specified, uh, granite unit pavers. And for the most part, those are, uh, pedestrian. Uh, you don't need vehicular access to most of those. Uh, and then the curbing along the planter beds would be, also be granite matching existing. And so all of these materials, again, were reviewed, uh, with a pretty large stakeholder group back in March and, uh, decided on during that meeting.
You have other questions? Seventy five percent plans. There are a few. So one question, first of all, in terms of white works, you know, twenty, twenty, like, I said, uh, it was three or one. I wish the, that, forty by, I think it was okay, but I do agree with all of the, the needs to be, like, that. For rest, and I would say the, I'm not sure what's happening with all of the, the rest end of this. So, the area would be somewhere that it is, um, although, you know, all of the important ones kind of are going back, or maybe there could be. You know, all of the point was kind of that, maybe there could be some. Some guys would have to be widened with that intersection to provide for different bike racks. And I was I actually I initially. Can you open the? The layout plan for that area. So.
Yeah. Sorry, because I. Well, that's great. Yeah.
So, yeah, so those. My initial thought was. And and I'm talking about getting rid of four by. So my initial thought was with that left to be twenty. Those virgin parking spaces could be replaced with uh. Number six by. And. And the reason I'm suggesting those parking spaces, I think as we try to see families using. We have more families with. Likes with third wheels, nice child trailers, private lives. And none of those, you know, we need to have some gap for them. We need to have. Probably twelve years that you may have. So I think a parking space is appropriate for you. Uh, so I was thinking about, you know, convert those first two parking spaces to um. To six. Play with. And then the next two parking spaces. I would think it would be more open ended area that should serve for things like uh. The price of those into more handicap oriented in car to life, so I think. But we will move it by. And we won't get between two two nightclubs. So I would suggest. Replacing the four of our spaces or perhaps somewhere. Bringing works and function works. Uh, not those you can uh, to to the closet. You know, that would be easiest to do. Um.
Sorry, unless you have related comments about bike uh, parking, so to speak. If I could ask a question about that. Uh, only because I go having discussed the various stakeholders, the global cost of various changes in this plan. Uh, I go, I just participate that I have a question from saying the parking clerk possibly one of the others who are concerned about where uh, where we're all benefiting from the next uh, and parking is benefited by the park space. Uh, I also have a fair amount of science and concern about the number of spaces that we're moving. And so my question there, I guess, is if we're able to, uh, work is if we see dress those concerned, but not necessarily the parking spaces and out there. Uh, would that from your perspective be acceptable? And I ask that every week because I know on the flip side, we're here potentially so exactly as to remove all the more spaces that are already the most here.
Well, sure. Let me just point out that my suggestion will replace two spaces with twelve.
I and I and later I have.
Two things you know, pardon. That is not beautiful, but. So I think in the other ones, they're getting advice that are changing trees, which is not going to be.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, I only ask because I know the flip side of what I protest against.
When I was at a gathering down the water, I really cheered and changed my mind. It's a little like that's going to happen. So I think that's, you know, something I think I also believe that, but I wonder why. The triangular like that is just like instead of the standard like that, use everything else.
Yeah, I I actually I can review that. I don't have the particular rational or personal judgment of that. There, I don't think you can speak that at all, but I think that will be easy substitute and I don't. I think there's a rational that having a sky for that. Uh, you have any concern about making that.
I'm sorry, can you?
Uh, changing the spec would be rats themselves from just something more consistently seen at these elsewhere rather than sort of triangular by grass that are in uh, submission as far. I think it's a subtle confusion. So I speak, uh, camera speaking, but either reason why they try to uh, very well, you know, better.
Uh, yeah, I think we can follow up on that. Sorry, I'm getting quite a bit of feedback. Um. And certainly take a look at.
Very reasonable.
I had a question about parking that or the question about. Well, several spaces in the designated is short term. And I was wondering what that meant.
Yeah, when we go back to the uh, the color rendering on that, I think some of that. Uh, so also. Uh, so this is where I request the leaders do it on the west line and try to hear. Wait a minute. Um, there's your current party in this lot. Uh, this is primarily because we were talking with both uh, armor master. What are my thoughts about the visitor or uh, working both. And the need for them to have an access along this path, at least periodically. Uh, this path is being designed and they're able to be going. So we needed to point access off of this parking lot. And that was part of the reason for the short turtle or this uh, this uh, space here in the ash area. Um, you know, the parking park is waiting on that. We'll have our trust waiting on that for these sort of clothes. Uh, your activities because this is a key bank exploring or exploring them. Uh, we move and so forth. Uh, be something that is that is something well maintained. I don't know if anyone has been getting from it, but uh, that's the reason for that location there and the sub wasn't. It's still provides parking which is balanced. Various insights here, trying to maintain as much parking as possible where we don't have park space. Uh, but also still providing access to that, which is double. Uh, we have some penny bank that's basically who is, even though we always provide our access to those.
So I guess my question is. We notice two spaces in this lot. Inside for fifteen hundred parking.
That's correct.
And the parking wouldn't, parking enforcement wouldn't see the car there, wouldn't charge the car.
Correct. Now, again, there's the part of this program for operations side of the city, but yes, you need to work in. Uh, you know, something there is inside and these parking clerk will adjust their performance this area accordingly. Uh, because of the need for both maintaining some parking spaces, but not uh.
Maybe the science says something fifteen hundred market for the chart.
Correct, correct, exactly. Um, there's shorter parking here and really associated with your uh, facility. You were hoping, I think, and I'll speak that. Private manager, we're hoping uh, the society possibly to be a little bit more innovative spaces here. Uh, they can play and it's feasible. Uh, and so you friends people here. Uh, and so uh, so that is the. And here like uh, that's just one uh, space uh, building. Um. I think there's a little bit of service part here. Uh, for for some of those uh, vehicles that are pulling up the larger inside, but again, yeah, the question, I think. Part of it is that I think possibly the second part of my class, the idea was in trying to make some space for the vehicles and the parking lot, not as the park space. But with the don't, with that part is basically creating for the public. Uh, so video is very definitely inspired by those folks. So uh, the making of it is probably is why I agree with.
So so your point about the news and the text. Interesting. So I was wondering about the words, a couple of children, right? You know, produce a little bit of revenue, but somebody's coming to the center. I don't mention. I want to.
Sure. And you know, before I can be uh, over the label that such a here, I think a lot of that goes to really, you know, we have to get that. Parking clerk and the operation to be as oversee whether or not further adjustments might be needed when they get a lot of our customers here where the site party or. Um, whether or not, you know, there might be adjustments going forward for that purpose. I think we largely defer to him. That's not making sense there, but I think you're raising that point, which we might want to flex those a bit further. Uh, but again, I I would want to speak to the partner, but has less better understanding of the battle supplies needed and what would work uh, based on the demands of the month or eight years.
Um. The national is going to comment by all. But the these spaces. Um, it does seem that two weeks says for one hundred sixteen. But the apartment is really small. I would suggest going to a least. Ten percent ED and hundreds for. You're talking more and more. When you do. And I'm sorry.
Sure, sure. Well, I think with that, I don't want to do with with costs, you know, being a consideration. I always support that. Um, and it isn't being done initially, so I give it some sort of connect in that road that. Uh, we would create as many began in there, recognizing uh, go caught in goodness when they run next year, like. But at least provide for user.
So. Maybe I guess. The question of what we're requiring of. Forty inches of sea level wise. Not. Maybe this one to do that with asset question. The ones.
Sure.
Last year in the time.
Sure. Yeah, I I'm going to try. I know that we don't have stuff here tonight, Mary, but uh, if you were maybe uh, I want to speak to that here. Obviously, you can follow it. We're next meeting uh, then for the field. I know we. Uh, talked about lots of the right support of graphics and uh, some things. Yeah, obviously, it's great, but you speak to that or.
Sure. I think it may also be helpful to just provide the planning board with a resiliency memo where VHB has outlined their assumptions and their modeling. Uh, that was produced in the last phase of work, but that may be helpful.
Sure. Yeah. So we'll actually upload the memory was provided. This is actually quite back. So we have to add on the and as part of even the silver society to speak to. You can upload that. You upload that memo can include a surrendering of plans with that, but. It's generally want to add the other comments now or uh, the question is asking about. About that or set up a way that we step because I would be. The difference of forty inches first, maybe I guess. Does that make it worse? Like this people that either were you tell or you want to come by now? Barrett, you with us?
I'm sorry, I I'm not. Having trouble making uh, sense of what you're saying. You wanted me to speak to the difference between the forty inches and fifty inches.
Yeah, the rationale for this section here. Now, here that's fresh, the step we use here for that place with uh, why? Fifty were supported. Set your title. That's a question you can enter now or whether you. Really, I wonder that.
Yeah, uh, I mean, the short answer is that there are different models that take into account different factors and look at different time horizons. And VHB is looking at one that incorporates uh, glacial melt that impacts sea level or is greater than the forty inches that uh, the state Massachusetts is currently looking at.
Any more questions?
George, you know, you have any, you can elaborate it and all, only so that we can make sure that what Stephanie is working on. Would provide if it goes to the level we have.
I haven't seen the number. I guess the point was it's the strategy last meeting since we're talking around fifty seven.
Yeah.
Obviously, much higher there. But um, that would imply. Higher. In the store.
For the building.
For the building.
Right.
You know, another.
Got it. Okay.
So so I guess the question is. At that point, I understand that the conservation position has been moved. Boy, this is. Part of discussions. Not like. Yeah, yeah, like me. I just. It was just confusing me under the toll fifty inches. Stand.
Well, uh, yeah, there, I mean, he's asking, we can uh, refer to our, and if we can touch base with Stephanie and see if we can do that back meeting, we can provide supplementary. You know, Dr. Taylor to the board to get a little bit of platform to maybe do that if they have, but um, it's definitely could be here uh, and and possibly something that will be that uh, let's feature the uh, rationale and source uh, of those models. This is what the board has better meaning of. Uh, you know, whether the board makes the fifty inches would step with that design that might be helpful.
All right. Yeah, we're working on updating that resiliency memo to include decisions that have been made uh, through this permitting process as well. So I think that'll be helpful.
So this, we have this.
Yeah, just another comment or suggestion. Um, referring to the bike racks on the east east end of the park. As far as the location, I was wondering if it might be uh, feasible to have a a bike rack near the area outlined as the area by the armor master turnaround. That's an area where you're just entering the park from the east and if people want to pen. That's there. The amount of heart there and then it's fun. Sure, we'll take a better look at that as well as where it will be someone else. Or like. Thank you.
I have a question. I have a question. Um, in front of the east law, we're not the, I think there's swings and there's a long, hungry seating area. We highlighted the one in that size call. What's the difference in grade there and the grade of the comfort burn? I'm just trying to figure out like, what are they looking at when they're sitting so much? Putting that right there, the first area.
Yeah, that's a great question. Uh, you know, I I realized there we did include a cross section in this area that we had done and some of that for the add up. Obviously, uh, wrapped for the next meeting uh, and supplement as we provide a cross section there. Like, uh, what is being done with it here? We talked a little about the shared use path, you know, this grade, and I don't think that, uh, I understand the concern. Really that we want to protect the use of water. I'm not sure that the pedestrian will be suffering. We must use here as a goal of the burn. Since we have a race to raise here, so. We want to the max. Uh, but if you speak to that and we provide a cross section, uh, I think we've developed previously here just to show what that looks like.
Yeah, we can certainly include that section in the next presentation. Uh, the the swing areas are high, so they are about the same level as the lawn in front. So the intent is that you could sit there and see out to the water.
Would it be, do you speak differently? Is the, what I mean in the pantry, the shared use path or that above the area in front of the water? Inspiration. Rational.
Yeah, I would imagine in. When you see these concrete lawn seating areas and they want to see the books as opposed to seeing the lawn in front of them. More.
And so the seating we provided that would really give that view would be um, under the shade structures that have the swings. Or the top bench.
This is one of the things we had a cross section that goes through the uh, water side of the burn. So we should have a serial back party lot. So maybe that cross section, like if I will see. Uh, we can, we can supplement the alphabet. This is what happens to show from very well, where this is. Then we share the further way that we're raising right here. Um, back down to, and so we get an idea that we're really not trying to block, ask if you can back here. Uh, what I'm trying to do is make sure that those books are seen behind our day over here are below that. We really go the same as the chair here on the world today. It's not a six or a three change as well.
Question.
Yeah. Yeah, I do. I do notice some people are waiting at me getting your detailed plans. So I'm just starting to look at them. First time I do see there is something great new from the community. Uh, but sections we still in the whole. Um, I have two questions. One is. You know, the way it exists, the way all that areas is without people or. There's it's very different when using festival, cause of laughter. Have you thought about a plan that shows how it can kind of move programs kind of to the mass and steer that I think to get a sense of like where really where your show of trucks going, where they potentially go for certain events. That would be very helpful to understand kind of the full scope of the flexibility that you're talking about on this area. Yeah, sure. I mean, maybe probably something. Yeah, I said to show this in the patients that, you know, like I said, uh, there was a distraction. Was there a motivated caller about what you're having certain um, candidate structure and so forth. Uh, there's more questions I had raised as we were going back to the last year and dialogue with all the stakeholders, but uh, I think the sensitivity was that by having, you know, other than the sort of swing set pieces that were sort of fairly accepted by folks as part of that that plan should make sense. Uh, there was some sensitivity. We were like, it's going to be sensitive, but maybe that structure. What a core block use. And so I don't know uh, how this might have been here then, uh, but we we have talked about the uh, vehicles that are part for that's uh, part of that grass maybe or either. Uh, the possibility of using some of these, whether it be the rain space, the more likely uh, this space to create a year or some of these wings, uh, you know, as a different, you know, tents and things like that. But a lot of that goes to folks that are programming activities there. Uh, I do know that, uh, I guess there's a meeting being set up in the coming weeks to recap this to get one coming event. Uh, that said, uh, see how things are working in general or what you can improve and taking that into account, which is planned, but throughout the process, we'll. Throughout the process, we'll say those are all the people that come up with us. We're here tonight, we're back, we're a little bit more of a trust, how do they, we got to go through the process so that we know that this area where adequate more flex and programming. All still have some good improvements, I have to worry that for us, people, try to do whatever. But generally speaking, you can try to provide flexibility without necessarily putting permanent physical improvements there that might detract from the bar there, I guess.
Well, that's actually what I'm getting at, like, here in New England, where we, where they got work to do in downtown Michigan.
Ah, yes, we're going to be. Sure, yeah, true, generally speaking, in this. Site here, we had the assumption is that vehicles would be parked here on the grass, which is a grass based installation that we have here thanks to. Other than this lovely thing with this here, just more heavier vehicles that we found here going and park there off, you know, off the parking area. All four parts of the vehicles here, we would have to talk about other areas here in a slightly different way because. There's less expectation of some of the vehicles coming in here, a lot of you do that, you know, we're going to. You really, you know, think that this is what you're writing, our story, but I have to defer those who really. Drive control, that could happen at a lot of times for that.
I guess to be saying, you know, it's talking around, you might be looking for some action with the back.
Yeah, sure.
You give people ideas, I mean, what does the people like?
Yeah, yeah.
It's my business of how. What's going to go when you could actually. Yeah, my second question is more technical, I, I'm just looking at this as kind of a fresh issue, it looks like there's a property transfer at this. Kind of getting a very well way downtown there, is that something that we? Sorry, so the property, there's a property, property boundary. Change or there's a distinction in the property, I'm just wondering if there's a property. Trade on this.
Yeah, it's a very, yeah, anybody wants here?
Yeah, yeah, sorry. I know, but this is, this is actually within our control here, that would be.
Yeah.
Users of my nice swap, we just, this is not something that's not within our control. We do have to make changes to start his faces, so we might be association with some of this island here, but that island would actually beneficially convert it into a walkway. And so this. We provide that for that go back in here. I just want to make sure that there's nothing that changes.
Yeah, it's within the city's control, so it's not, and I realize that why that's on your computer. But it is something within our control, so we can come back and say, I'm sorry, we couldn't build that because it's not within our. Our system.
So I'm going to run down through this. What I think we've asked for, for the next time. Anybody like the actuals? And this is important because. Yet for this complicated, that means we may not postpone the twenty first. Otherwise.
Correct.
So if it's something that's inside, you can respond to. Rather than using. Then you are here. Becomes more complex. Then.
Right, so if I go right up there and do the timeline of this, and share, and then read that one, this is. The request here for the board for the next meeting. And partly a question, however, that as to whether or not it makes sense for us to have a contingency until September seventh, the first day before next month. That would be two weeks, just to turn around our plans, first is going to point first, where we have to give you some marketing here. And, you know, bird of the earth again, reviewing, getting materials that, it's quite a really big deal to think about this list here, so. We learned some comments today, everything that we got from that, maybe we have a hot topic list, that we can speak to when we get that sense of further guideline, whether we settle for point one or not.
So, first thing that I have is additional right parking on this end of the park, location determined. That would include additional spaces and some flexible spaces for larger units that there's price for. So that's the first item. The second item has to do with even parking. Whether we can come up with, come up with a plan for additional spaces. Whether they actually will build, whether it just. Trying to, trying to guess. Third thing is providing that section. You, the plaza area, showing we get a sense of the views to the water. Fourth thing is. Some information about what's going to happen in the parking lots during phase one. Because those can be, they're not going to be encircled, but it's going to be something. Changing the bike rack as well is a very simple. An exhibit showing a. Program site, the festival or something like that, showing how the site is going to be used. There's a lot of people around there. And then I think the other thing I would like the. The planning office in its office to respond to two people who talked about shade. And, and one of them talked about more flexible use of that. Of that plaza area swings. In swings, it's too rigid, too structured. We want to have a place for people to keep some of the rain. And I think, you know, thinking about both those comments that came up, you're going to look at. That this is. It seems that maybe that, that is good shade of water. For a dozen of it. You're placing the vertical type structure, shade structure. Might, might be something to address. What we're fishing for, raise those. So that, that's why I, anybody open anything up they want to see before the next.
Oh, yeah, yeah, just, I, I still would have a concern about the patient, the shared use path by the invadent. And. Not be feasible, but I think the shared use path will be better placed behind the very large plaza and across. So that there would be more separation between the bikes from the pedestrians. And then better continue through, and obviously if there's a huge event, you're not going to be trying to ride back to there, so I think it wouldn't. Be an impact having that path, wanting to stay here.
I think just comment on that one, I understand the concerns and I was here in part of the dialogue debate about. Your line of, a framework plan, so to speak, and. You're original something that if it's going to go back by the firehouse, I live around the outside of the debate law space. That dialogue resulted in. A degree within this council, a lot of our trusted parties that go to the second payment, that air sharing concerns. I, I still myself, this issue as we were talking about some time ago, last years. But because there's been pretty clear direction, the council would include a little discussion previously about this. I, I actually just brought it back here and, you know, for the society team. We would, we really need direction, council could change that at this point. It isn't within our control to, I'd say we're going to make that change because that really requires us to kind of think about, go every concern that. As also, I'll have discussions with the chairman committee, as president, chairman committees here and ones who've been above this particular issue, but. Unless the council wants to change that, the other direction that is that ours is down, and so it becomes hard for us to be a latterly. As society, as the society, you are the product, we have the time, we're part of it, now to go back and say here, we're addressing the playbook, so.
I guess I would urge you to. I want to, and talk about because it has come up. Most times, obviously. And so, you know, we'd like to have best plan possible. And that one is, is as good. But, you know, we understand we can't do it, we can't do it, we may be stuck.
And sure, and I will definitely be having that conversation here, I will also just know, and I may do have to also discuss that with a lot of trust because if you ultimately go on the second lawn space. And so who wins that space is certainly, that would also have to be with their approval, so we'll, we'll have that to ensure and sort of the back of you. Just letting you know in the extent in which I feel correctly as a designer, I have to control that.
Just a related thing that I forgot to mention a lot, I was thinking that, I think Bob mentioned, glad I mentioned it. Previously, when I was redesigning the rest of the chair, this, all the chair these have.
Yes.
Giving, how did you, I would, I would decide what. And give examples.
Yes. Yes, and I think we'll, we'll make it from that, after you have a revised plan, but we'll be down more in part like that. Detail, but I think that would, like the bike racks, and this is, we'll look easier.
Just a question on this issue. My interpretation is all this is, there's still a blocks. Then, I, I think there's better, there were better options potentially, but if this is what we land on, would there, if this was a plan that gets approved. Would there still be a no by his own boss problem on?
Yeah, just to be clear here, you know, for one, for trust, the policy has been, I think will continue to be the bicycle that are allowed formally on the way. For one, I, I realize off season that, you know, during the off season, there were a lot of desperate activity, suspects, people were trying to. Roads, but there's an official policy to water for us, is the bicycle not allowed there? And while the shared use path on the east and west side, the wings would be provided right through there. You would have to get off just out and walk your way through the section here, that's generally speaking. Dog, I think, right, we advanced, not necessarily change directly, have a lot of class of that on the boardwalk, and the second one, David, part of that, you would have to just stop.
That's what I expect, I just want to make sure.
I'm not sure if I love that or not, but regardless, I just want to make sure, and again, part of that, there is a factor, of course, but one of the points of conflict is the stuff in relation to sharing the background on San Angeles. I think part of that came in the back during the heavy events, and again, it's, you know, that is clearly not weird and stuff, it's all right, there are. Such a bold places there, if there's a large event here, having a shared bathroom here, sets up people, you can debate those before that, what is, where is the worst, but. There was some concern by having it going here and that was, I think the sensible, back that I got the time that I actually held, essentially that. Yes, that, you know, hope that this not a lot of the area, yes, there's a lot, you know, people want that, but if you're not making current suppose that it's, there are other events. But as a, as a practical result of that, what happened is that, because it couldn't walk, you know, like, we're trying to get at this. Down here, we're very practical, most, you know. Yes, that might be the vice list, but it's again, balance of rumors to choose, and unfortunately like anything else, particularly a project like this, it's underwater. Many people, we can't satisfy every, the one consideration perfectly, we have the balance, and so here, we're great to have a sharing path that goes right through there, that's. Of course, the last one's to maybe change here, the whole operation, nowhere, there's, you know, there's a need to perhaps balance these things, and that's what they're sending out. So, unfortunately, it doesn't last through this like that, but.
So, so I would just make two points, one is. I worry that, what if I like to, thought that they're not able to do it. You know, this has been so crowded, it's, it's not, it's not so much a matter of why you do, and not why it's so crowded. Yeah, people who are twice as wide, basically the side. It's been, you know, it's almost sacred, right? But I would say, what I, what I would suggest is a very minimal. Is that. If you could flare, see, on this plan, this plan doesn't match, it's definitely my opinion. Unfortunately, on the east. Yeah, that way. This is actually, black and white. So you see here on both sides, I think those are planted blocks.
Right here and here.
Yeah, right, you, you live on this side.
Sorry, right this side.
It's the west side that the space pull off. The east side of the maintenance is pull off this. So I would encourage you, if you can't do anything else, to widen the shared use path.
Here.
I would actually do a.
Got it, yeah.
Because you're coming in, lighting in, that pull off, you get off your light, the water, you want to get out of the way of.
So giving a little, we're still landing there, going through there, maybe get wired or.
I would have started at sixty with.
We'll take a look at that.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's not. As you say, I think you're channeling, you're actually channeling blocks like outside, it's not ways to go.
Yeah, I actually witnessed this recently, I was, where the office currently, yeah. You know, because people usually like the moves, I mean, some, there are often moves of three or four people, and so now you have a queue in the three or four people. All stop and you can get them on, yeah, it does need more space, okay. We'll take a look at a moment, we're in a separate, second, like we're located.
Is there, I'm trying to, one last, we could go back to the last end of the really. Where is, where is, comment, my comment about. That transitions out of the street, but.
Yeah.
And also, we weren't at the exit from the parking lot. Here. That, that would really comfort you, deliver you into the logical path. If you, if you think about that parking diagram, that all this comment is on. It feels like this is more of a setting the road to turn left. Here, which is one way, right, and pushing that, that road a little bit further to the north. So that you can exit freely, that consistency side of the guy.
We were, we, we're stints. Yeah.
Part of what creation. You're doing.
Sure, I, I guess. Yeah, I think it's about a, a bold existing condition, I think we're not necessarily changing, but maybe your point, what I could do is a bit of a sign in one that. To possibly get a look at this, by the way, the cost of, whether or not you get to.
You know, you want to think, because there's one parallel, right?
Just wanted to share you. Right, right, okay. Okay, we'll take a look at that.
Anything else? So. This is a September seventh or September first.
Are you, I don't think I want to worry about.
I think we could be prepared for September seventh, but I would, it would be helpful, Andy, for us to touch base tomorrow morning.
Yeah, so I, I guess for now, based on that, and I think it would make sense if the board is to decline, we would ask for a seven, so we could divide plans, give ready. Where the rules have to call during the Sarah, we would ask for. Impact, more burden, you know, we'd be here, but we'd like to, you know, sort of act with the vice players and pick up this strategy. To model where this is.
So could I have a motion to continue the minor site plan, review application, the work of the part expansion of this movement facility. During September seventh.
Second.
So. Local, Paul.
Yes.
Well, Jamie.
Yes.
Kevin. Thank you, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary, Julie, and I like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda is to request for minor modification. At thirteen Doyle Drive. This is my modification, both the subdivision plan and the. The special plan.
Correct, and we have a couple of videos submitted by the applicant, we have each other's sites, he looks here, and I do have the slide materials. Please, if necessary, we have the applicant, are you out? And one question, we're getting that, you know, people, the ones, this is not a, it's not a special. It's a minor modification, the minor modification. I think that's, hey, that's, that's. So I, do you want to introduce yourself and speak to us, the other big rules?
Yeah, I'm Benny Sazie, thirteen Doyle Drive. When we were meeting.
You speak, spell your last name.
Sure, it's F O R, Z E S. I know, doesn't sound like it spells. So since we last met, we did go to conservation and kind of showed them what we were looking to do. They were okay with the placement of the plunge pool that we're looking to put in, as well as the fencing. I believe they also, we did put up a shed up there, which they also moved at that time. So what we're, what we're kind of showing here on this, on this drawing is basically. This is thirteen by seven foot plunge pool that's right there, we're circling it. And then there's going to be some fencing, it's, it's, it's going to be within the setbacks of six feet from our, from our neighbor's lot. Um, and then there is going to be a little bit of a, um, of a. Gabor's kind of, uh, kind of catwalk around.
I just wonder why is it, uh, you go.
Correct. Yep. So those are pretty existing, uh, parts, right? So, um, just, just the area around where the, uh, that punch bowl is what's going to be added, uh, additionally.
And you have some photos that I think are helpful because you labeled a photograph.
We did, yeah. So that's kind of what we're stuck right now. Um, so the, the red line, um, kind of to the left. Of the, of the house, that's going to be where the set fence is going to go. It's going to be same as the fence that's kind of on the far end. Um, we have, we have a hole there right now, but that's pretty much where that, that pool will go when it's dropped in. And then the arrow kind of close to the home is going to be where the, um, where the filtration system is going to be. Oh, yeah. And there'll also be a fence along the, uh, along the back wall that kind of runs in front of the, um, the split, split relevance.
Actually, this, this was helpful, this meeting was helpful because we can see the neighborhood, two houses down. Seems to have been saying that they put a solid fence just inside.
Correct. Actually, yeah.
Is that a pool also that they have?
No, they, they just have a, one, uh, neighbor close to us has a, uh, just a patio area and the other one just has a swing set. Yeah. So it'd be a six foot fence that's along the sides and then we're planning on doing a four foot stockade and, uh, just to kind of keep the view. Yeah.
You said six foot, you mentioned.
Excuse me.
That's the existing.
Assistant fence. Just another aerial. Yeah, that's like your own work.
Um, do members of the board have any questions about this? Any questions? About this?
There is a required review by the conservation.
And, and when you spoke at the conservation, uh, you mentioned the papers around the.
Correct. Yeah. We, we showed them our whole project here. Yeah.
There are no questions. Um, I would accept a. Motion. Now, the motion would be. To consider the request for modification by. At a who said my modification request. Wait, wait. That's in the language, it's in the language.
By all that, I don't know whether that. Oh, yes. Sorry, sorry. Yes. Uh, Chuck, your name is right. And there is a section of the ordinance, uh, that, that we're all talking about here. I think that section, there's a waiver, it's like a task. It's essentially a waiver, uh, and otherwise a protocol restriction. Or work like this. And in this case, uh, the conservation commission was consulted and reviewed at first. We have that here and we asked that we have run that.
So I'll start with. I'd like a motion to consider the request for modification by. And who said minor modification request and waiver. For thirteen. Twenty nineteen, we have Ola and twenty nineteen S D rate. Pursuant to the newly voids on the ordinance, section fourteen J A two.
I'll lift that motion.
Lift his motion. Got a second? Okay. So, um. There's a word on this, Owen.
Yes.
Well.
Yeah.
Jamie.
Yes.
Kevin.
Yes.
Appreciate it. Sorry, we're not as long as the earlier one. Something about the, uh, of that.
Thank you. That's going to be awesome.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, two minutes. And, uh, first one, we're back to. I think I checked out the voting. If there are any comments or questions. So, and who was, is there anybody who's not at that? Okay. So, uh, motion to minutes of the. Okay, uh. Oh, oh.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
Kevin. Very good. And then the, uh, minutes of the July twenty.
I wasn't.
Okay, uh, the motion to. Second. One second. Okay, so, uh, Jamie is training, so, oh, yes. Well. Yes.
And updates. Uh, there were two things I would add. There's no other things. I don't add. Uh, two things, we, we process that lots of the days. Uh, but, um, I, I'm working on, uh, a couple of adjustments, clearing up some things and, uh, what was said better for the. Yeah. My law, I think about it, it makes sense to bring that to the council. You know, what was happening with zoning here is like, oh, tack it in there, try to get some. There are other. Uh, that's one of them, just. Uh, one other thing that came up on the plane that I think is beneficial and it's something that, um, for the board, it's a respond board is. Uh, there are a couple of houses that mentioned these, uh, other traffic. Uh, a discussion there, uh, this came up. Uh, but the yes is being that, uh, when we were the plenty ward, it's yay and before the second plan. Uh, but there might be traffic improvements or things like that, or make sense for this one to consult with others. Uh, to get feedback. And as you guys know, it would be fine if we, uh, some lines of those other ordinance that says, um, that. Part of our whole process is to rub through that. Get the feedback and take that into account before additional decisions. And we can talk about the nuances of that, but I think the idea there was to, um, similar to what was spoken against a couple of years ago for sidewalks. Um, and how essentially we support the C D F point, get back on specific points. In that case, the Department of Public Services, the tree division. Um, for sidewalks, trees. Um, to hear, uh, compel applicants to go over there, to try to get you back there. And at least to the board, thank you for that feedback. If you don't get feedback, uh, or we get, you know, the problems. Or if, you know, thirty, some other wind passes, it will get anything that's up. But I think that we need to. Make sure that before, uh, I can just like say, I'll, I'll give an example. Where an applicant comes forward and has been to a couple of wheels, uh, for some basis one. And it's really pressing, hoping for a photo. Or Google and say, don't trust us. We've done everything. Sidewalk improvements proposed adequately to basically put a pause on that. We haven't actually heard back, um, professionals that serve on the. Then that's adequate. It may not make sense. Here it flows out of this sort of people because we haven't heard back from those. Who are professionals and probably deal with these issues. And so any beneficial to hear back from them. Before closing the hearing. And so, uh, here, you know, like we can talk about prior examples, but for a fight example. Um, this would give us an opportunity, uh, all of the people to say, you know, applicant, have you got the feedback back? Is that what you said? Or have you just dead end the sidewalk to someone that doesn't actually need to, you know, accessible crossing across the street? In that case, by example, we might say to the developer, we want you to put a ramp across the street without sidewalk connection. This is not adequate to dead end of that. We actually bring it across. And sometimes, or, you know, like, you know, one, one time in South example where the developer said, hey, you know, we put in the sidewalk. Up here sidewalk actually dead end of the sidewalk. It makes sense. Here, uh, this would allow us to compel better destruction such that if the developer wants to close out, that's a word especially, but. Uh, we might be too new to say, hey, wait, the developers' plans aren't adequate. And add back these professionals that serve on the. Uh, police department that I hear about, plenty department, et cetera, uh, there's office. Um, we would like that to be when we go get your recommendation or better, we'll incorporate those things. Rather than, you know, taking the takes out of it.
That's a great idea. Two things that I would like to consider regarding, one is, um. Maybe your sentiment he said. But as for important. And the other is you might want, you might want to look. When you're looking at, at updating some, like the site found. Reserves. Actually having some magnitude. Don't connect to, you know, sidewalk connectivity. Just add some. Deep up some of the. Yeah, some standards, some standards about traffic safety. Uh, we, we can, it's easy to borrow it somewhere else.
Sure. Question. My experience since the second is pretty outdated. So who's, who's supposed to make up these days? Uh, so we monthly, uh, there typically right now they're being done as, as, uh, June or. Actually, the boat you want to do, uh, for a block on. But generally speaking, it's once a month. Uh, it's primarily just, we have, uh, some of the city council, we have the Department of Public Services, we have the planning department. Uh, we have planning agency center. Uh, and he's that great. Um, and, uh, police department, uh. Uh, fire department, you know, they get. Um, mainly staff, but again, the state council members. What that, recent. Right, right. And they, they have a very strong, but they have a public safety committee of their own. I have a right to be there. They have a very strong image of the areas. Uh, they don't like to hear their constituents, uh, have a matter. And because of the sometimes you overlap where this board is controlling the permitting classes. And there's no, like, what might be either improvements privately and entirely on the public right away. Uh, we want to integrate those things. And so, uh, it is a mixture of staff, but it also has, like, this is kind of. Regularized up the tangent, you know, things with, you know, the care, you know, but. Uh, so it's, it's a variation of, of both staff.
Now, one thing that I thought. It's not, not the original thought, but it would be really great to have. So we're on top of.
Yes, and then from a, from a mechanical point of view. Uh, on the open door system, although you don't see it, uh, here. Internally, when applications are being filed, the body will process it. Possibly we can include in that process, you know, instead of going to software. Uh, but this would be essentially formally running like plans are in the apartments. It should be running to the chair of the town. The chair will deal with the schedule. Tenders and so forth, but there'd be a point person that could provide written comments that are given for it. Whether that was the conveyance of the staff before you get to us on this or otherwise, uh, there'd be a full person. It's exactly like. We have a type of review that is about plan or. Specifically focused on graphic, that's all stat. And we might have other sort of feedback, uh, that are going to be brought here, like this one. It might be in the. It could be sitting here, who's the visiting person. And you would have better than if they're written on us.
Do they know most?
Um, I. Not really, no. And that's what I thought. Yeah, I have to defer, I mean, I, I, I think they're. Uh, the meetings are recorded and I think. Not a solid with this.
Um, adding to your list of. I know this is on the table, so I don't try to. It's just like, you know, changes to see.
Yeah, actually, and I, one thing I would say is that it's been suggested that they change in the law succeed where, uh, previously the. And again, we'll, we'll, you'll see a change. There's a special list with some thought. Obviously, you know, there's some words of. So, uh, it is a special, I think sixteen was relatively recently amended. And so, uh, previously sixty allowed. Multiple presidential structure on one block could be multi family. Uh, more recently was amended to sort of down scale that and really focus on, you know, civil. Uh, and this special was made to us by, uh, I don't know if you represent a lot of applicants saying, well, that doesn't cover the possibility of multi family structure. And so where does that can go with them? Um, so we looked at section sixteen and section sixteen. Uh, and so I imagine the discussion may not just pertain to, or may not even, that's some covered in sixteen, it might be some other second ordinance. Uh, and again, it's really a question for us to see if it makes sense to change, uh, if being initiated by an applicant or applicant representative. Uh, but what we're looking for, what is the price there? See why would make sense. Does that make sense, of course, before very section sixteen, in section sixteen or some other place? Uh, but we have to decide whether or not we'll be requesting or suggestion makes sense and where it makes sense. So what we started back and that was some plots and the technical part of it, so anywhere to stay for your consideration. And we got to decide whether or not it makes sense to bring toward the council or whether it helps. Sort of period moving back. Uh, I don't know that it, it may not be just succeed or it not be succeed with that. This actually goes to, I think, maybe this, what I think, uh, this is. He is maybe thinking about, uh, open family. And that maybe when it's not, if it is desired out there to be six, it may be some other second.
Anything else?
I don't know.
The, uh, at my community in Watertown West, I mean. We have a council, our third meeting, uh, looks like it's going to be scheduled for. We'll send them out, everybody.
Okay, now, I, I'll have a look at what they would be, what's supposed to be.
Uh, and then just, you know, where did everybody. Long, zooming down roads. We just got the, uh. Final guidelines for. And so it's gotten much more flexible than it was six months ago. Just started to have to start thinking about it. We have to come up with an action plan by January thirty first. The action plan is about how we're going to revise or certain. Comply with the standards and have to. Have our zone in place. We actually have to start thinking about.
Right, yeah, I'm sorry, I, I shared right. I didn't, uh. Comment anything today. Well, we'll sort of go back and give you some of the stuff, some of that. Uh, Massachusetts Municipal Association and Chapel, other places, you know, to summarize this stuff. Uh, and, uh, you know, the guidelines of the post now on this. Uh, that was that we watched. Uh, and as, as you mentioned, they're much more flexible. Uh, it's like, it's just, uh, it's more realistic. Well, I think about what was being expected versus the prior example, the bird that I have documented. At the town line, we have a transition line and we're treated by this, this regulation, but the original, uh, expectation is that you basically. Uh, bear the full responsibility of that bill out around the transition where it's now this. That should be shared across the town line as opposed to. And you have a town, uh, simultaneously. So things like that will be, it must be more realistic and reasonable without necessarily affecting the. Double and triple before we are.
Is that real? Just on the state side?
Uh, on the state website, you're going to guidelines are, there are other places where there are synopses. So, uh, so if you go to the N M A website and they made an order before we go to Chapel or their website, there's some reason we can, I can distribute some of the stuff. Yeah, if you type in Massachusetts, M B T A, H C P guidelines, you're going to get it. So, uh, but anyway, uh, we can distribute some more material, but I think it'd be helpful for us also to back, or with summary, but also. What we think are realistic guidelines and the sort of, we gotta, we gotta talk about every sort of subject together for circle back on this. And we're starting to get, we gotta, we gotta talk about every sort of something together, circle back on this. So off the top of my head as well. I know we're helping from us as well, so I'll probably put together a slide presentation about something back out of the background, it's been finalized. Uh, but as we mentioned, we'll have to come up with a game plan in addition to recap about our game plan. And then go forward and report that going to the state and then sort of fall through on the message. And then finally, the board back state, I did all those changes, tweaks that were consistent with that, and good, good work. And check the blast and learn the clients. So and that'll basically make sure our, our grant programs and presumably that will be provided, I don't know how those are running. Uh, but uh, you know, at least swimming, I was a very, uh, for the grant programs.
Have you heard, heard anything about NICO three?
I have not, I, I do want to check in with them on that, um, but I think that's largely just based on the market saturation. About their uh, the pre-loss planes, this is just like the front end. Uh, I'll check in on that with them. Uh, and they do also have potential interest in maybe a project required, uh, for a plaza area. Uh, that was smaller, but I think maybe forty. Uh, like some like, something there, that's, but who won?
Anything else from anybody? Motion for adjourned?
Some would.
Second. Everybody's second, okay. Owen, yes.
Kevin.
Yes. Well, two, yes. Thank you, everybody.